Welcome, everybody, to our November thirteenth on a Wednesday, a little bit unusual, regular Board of Education meeting. We are glad you could all make it and for most of you to be recognized tonight. First off is our roll call. Please do that, Ms. Sauber.
Ms. DiLorenzo.
Here.
Ms. Kawhi.
Here.
Dr. Middleton.
Here.
Mr. Ryder Garcia.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here. Would you all please rise and join me for our Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Can I get a motion, please, to adopt tonight's agenda? Ms. Sauber.
Dr. Middleton.
Aye.
Ms. Kawhi.
Aye.
Ms. DiLorenzo.
Aye.
Mr. Ryder Garcia.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye. Can I get a motion, please, to approve the Oakwood Board of Education meeting minutes of October fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, regular board meeting and work session? Ms. Sauber.
Mr. Ryder Garcia.
Aye.
Ms. Kawhi.
Aye.
Ms. DiLorenzo.
Aye.
Dr. Middleton.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye. Next up is reports and public comments.
Yes, I'd like to ask our athletic director, Mr. Rotis, to go to the podium. And as he's walking up, I do just had a good conversation with Mr. Rotis this afternoon and actually a couple of weeks ago. He's going to be talking and recognizing our false state athletes and for sports. And I just want to say that he does a great job. I think that it's difficult with the number of sports that we have and that you're going to find out the wide array of students with their achievements that they have and just managing all the different things that happen with that. And he does it with such grace. He does it with such leadership and teaches me every time we have a conversation. And so I just wanted to take a moment to just appreciate him because he's taking care of our coaches and our students all the time.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate that. The kiddos make it easy. So they're the ones that should be recognized tonight. Not sure exactly how you want to do this.
Sure. You just want to just go by sport and just introduce the students. We'll come up. We'll have President Wilson and I come up to the front and hand out certificates. And if the students just want to come up and get a certificate to be recognized, then what we'll do is Mrs. Brown, our community relations coordinator, will take a couple informal pictures here, but then we'll kind of walk out and take a group picture outside as we know it's outside somewhere. Families can go at that time, too. By the way, students and families, you don't have to stick around. We're going to let you go and you have homework to do and you have and I'll even say go take your student out to go celebrate with some greater thanks for you don't have to stay for the meeting. You can, but you won't have to. You won't hurt my heart.
Perfect. Let's have tennis come up first. So Mila and Niobe, you guys can come up So as they're coming up, both played singles all season and then for postseason played doubles, freshman and sophomore, and was able to qualify for state. So quite the accomplishment for both of them. So first we have Niobe Byers Dorfer. So congratulations.
Thank you.
And also we have Mila Gilbert. Let's have Will Morris for boys soccer come up. So again, boys soccer had a great season. Will helped leading that team and had the great honor of finishing all Ohio. So for Division Four, All Ohio, Will Morris. Boys cross country, come on up. As many of you've heard with Boys Cross Country, they've been on a nice run here the last few years, making it to state. This year's a team, they finished twelfth overall in the state of Ohio. So great season for them. We have Oliver Spalding, Tony Orsello, Nico Farah, Jack Morrissey, Manny Williams, Ben Sayer, and Cameron Lindsay. Girls cross country, come on up. The same with the girls. They've been on a nice streak here of qualifying for state and this year finished ninth overall in the state of Ohio for Division Two, Three, Two. Had to think about it because we added the extra division this year.
No, we're just.
Two. Yeah, this year, yeah, two. All right. So a couple couldn't be here tonight, but we have Adriana Eleopolis, Sarah Redden, Sylvia Gallagher Yerman, Isa Dunlap, Delaney Cahill, Elizabeth Irwin, and Catherine Irwin. And then just lastly, also, we found out today that Josie Russell got All State for girls soccer. So we'll send her an invite and try to get her to come one of these next couple of months. So great fall season.
We're ready to go. We're going to pick up with item two B and I'll turn it over to Dr. Gupta.
Yes, and I'll go ahead and invite up Dr. Lang to introduce our speaker for the forensic science curriculum report.
Yes. Science teacher Melinda Wargaki is with us tonight to share information about the evolution of the forensic science program at Oakwood High School over the last twenty years. One of her students, Dustin Tater, is also here to share how they've been inspired by these classes to pursue a career in the field of forensic psychology. So, Melinda? Dustin?
So tonight I'm going to share with you all how the forensic science program has evolved over time. Nineteen years ago is when I started this forensic science program. At the time, it was called Forensic Science One. It was a semester class and early on it became known as CSI Oakwood. And that's what students today will still call the class. I'm going to go through some of the units that I started teaching with and then how I've kind of added things to it. So one of our first units that we cover is on forensic entomology. So using insects to determine time of death and help the police officers solve the crime. I always liked this unit because it's fun to bring in a chicken to decompose outside and the kids have the opportunity to see like real live maggots and they get grossed out and I love taking pictures of them during that little demonstration.
So this was my first glimpse into how many forensic branches existed because I never thought bugs played a part in solving crimes. And I recall telling my friends and family that my forensic class was observing a decomposing chicken. And their replies were a mix of, oh, that's so gross. That's horrifying. And that's awesome. And I thought it was kind of awesome.
I'm sorry. Could you introduce yourself?
Oh, yes. Sorry. I'm Dustin Tater and I'm a senior.
Oh, thank you, Dustin.
I still cover fingerprints. So the students will get to fingerprint themselves using the black ink like the police departments do. They always enjoy looking at their fingerprints and trying to determine what pattern type they have. I also still do developing of latent fingerprints. We use the black powder. I have learned over the years that we do this lab outside now because it is very messy and the black powder gets everywhere. So they enjoy kind of using the brushes like they see on TV shows and they realize it's not what it's like on TV.
So this is my favorite unit because learning that everyone had like a unique fingerprint was very interesting to me. And I was like, if everyone has a unique fingerprint, then it's so easy to like identify people and like put people in jail. But like I soon realized that several factors play into matching fingerprints and how many crime scenes didn't even like have fingerprints to lift.
I do a dental stone casting of shoe prints. And actually, this year, when my students were out in the hallway cleaning their casts up, an Oakwood police officer just happened to walk by that day and asked what we were doing. And so my students told him what we were doing. And it was pretty cool because he told the students, oh, I've actually had to do that a couple of times. So it was nice to hear from him that I'm just not making up this stuff, but it actually is used, that the law enforcement does use these things. Of course, I always do. I've always done blood spatter. This is one of my favorite units. It's typically one of the students' favorite units. Also, the students get to learn what happens like when somebody shot, what impact spatter looks like, arterial spurts, cast off. They learn how to calculate angle of impact. So we pull in some geometry into the class. They get to see what happens when blood falls from different heights on different surfaces. So there's a lot of labs that we do within this unit.
My favorite memories from this unit was when Ms. Wargaki shot fake blood out of a syringe to demonstrate blood spatter patterns at crime scenes. And I vaguely remember like people walking down the hallway while she was doing this in the hallway. She's like flinging blood everywhere. I was like, oh, that's so fun. And I also enjoyed looking at photos of crime scenes, including the famous OJ Simpson crime scene.
And then in twenty eighteen, I started a forensic science two course. So what this has allowed me to do is slow down a little bit in the first semester in forensic science one and add in some additional cases, some additional labs. And I have a whole second semester to add in some additional units. I used to do mock crime scenes as the final exam for forensic science one. I've now moved that to two. So that's how we kick off the semester is I set up mock crime scenes and the students have to process, package the evidence. They write a police report as to what actually happened at their scene. And this is a fun way to kind of start the semester in January. I'm able to spend quite a while on forensic anthropology in the forensic science two course. Oakwood Schools Foundation purchased six of these. They're called Sherlock Bones Kits. Each group gets a kit that has remains in it and they have to learn how to measure the skull and measure the legs and bone and arm bones, leg bones, and determine things like the race of the individual, the sex of the individual. So they have fun kind of doing things that a real anthropologist would do. I do a unit on forensic ballistics now in forensic science two. I've pulled in forensic toxicology. This is usually one that is well received by the students also. And in the past, because now I have a whole extra semester, I'm able to bring in some guest speakers. So within this unit, sometimes I will have the Kettering canine unit come in and they can do some demonstrations of how their dogs try to do searches for drugs. And it's fun having the students get to meet the dogs. This is another one of my favorite units, forensic pathology. So we, the students learn exactly how an autopsy is performed. And at the end, they do an autopsy on a banana, including the stitching up at the end, the Y-shaped incision. And they end up having to write a little story as to what happened and what the crime was and how their banana was killed. So this is just a few pictures from that. What really changed my class is in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, I did a self-reflection on using podcasts in the classroom. This has been the biggest change for me, like personally and professionally. So we do one podcast in forensic science one. The students listen to it on their own and they have an assignment that they have to do from that. But then in forensic science two, we listen to some podcasts as a class and discuss some cases that way. This is one of the first podcasts the students get to listen to. It's on the Amy Mahalavich case. If you've never heard of this case, it's in Bay Village, occurred in Bay Village, Ohio, and it is an unsolved case. It is still actively being investigated. So we're able to talk and the students learn about this case. These are some other true crime podcasts that I've incorporated into my class. And True Crime All the Time is one of my favorites. They are local here to Dayton. And so I was able to have one of the podcasters come in last March and speak to the students during the leadership series, which was, I mean, it was like having a celebrity come in for me. I mean, I'm like bouncing all over the kids. I enjoyed it, but I don't think they understood as much as I did. But this is like really cool to have this podcaster come. So he explained how he got into podcasting. So these are just a few of my students that day. And then the real big project, this has been ongoing for about four years now. I cover a wrongful conviction case. The individual's Timujin Kenzu. And in nineteen eighty-six, he was accused of murder. And he is in prison today. It's been thirty-eight years. There's no physical evidence whatsoever tying him to the crime. And so as a class, we have tried to write clemency letters to Governor Whitmer. This occurred in Michigan. So one year we wrote clemency letters asking to grant him clemency. We've written letters to Dana Nestle, which is the Attorney General of Michigan. Last year, we wrote letters to Erin Moriarty of Forty-Eight Hours, trying to get her to cover the case on her show or her podcast. Just recently, this year, my students wrote postcards back to Governor Whitmer, asking her again to grant clemency. Clemency's been denied twice. But there are law enforcement, there's judges, there's all behind this individual. So I mean, he is absolutely, there's no physical evidence whatsoever. And as we started doing this, I actually got to know this individual. He will write to us sometimes. This was during the COVID era, which that was the trickiest thing ever to try to teach forensic science during COVID. But this was just a little message that he sent to my students, thanking them for everything that they've tried to do on his behalf and trying to get him out of prison. And they were so thankful that Timujin and his wife paid to have these T-shirts designed and they purchased one for every single one of my students. So they're kind of like a walking advertisement for letting people know about this particular case. It's been in the Dayton Daily News. A Detroit news station interviewed us and like we had a Zoom interview. So the kids really like being able to see real life scenarios, real life situations that they can actually be a part of. I have students come back that graduated and will ask me, what, is there anything new in this case? They will send me emails asking me. So this has been really fun for me to get the students to understand about how the criminal justice system does work.
Okay. So Ms. Wargaki gave me the opportunity to go to Waynesburg, Pennsylvania, which hosted a CSI camp. And I spent about a week there and I learned a lot of stuff and I'm going to share some things that I learned. So when I arrived at Waynesburg, because of this class, I knew I wanted to pursue a career in forensics. And this summer camp helped me narrow down my options. So I recall processing crime scenes and being excited because I thought I would be cleaning up scenes with descriptions like, man stabbed twenty-five times and blood out in his home. But it's, it's not like that. It's like crime scene cleanup crews mostly deal with drug overdoses and natural death. And I was like, that's not fun. And it's kind of gross. So I'm not going to do that. I remember packaging evidence with knowledge Ms. Wargaki taught me. And when I showed the off-duty police officer participating in the camp, she congratulated me on my perfect packaging and took a photo of my evidence. At that moment, I could only think, yes, Ms. Wargaki would be so proud of me. Some minor activities we did were drug testing with, he called them real drugs. I don't, I don't know if they're real, but and testing human and animal blood, fingerprint lifting, and the fingerprint teacher actually complimented me on my knowledge of fingerprint terminology, and numerous speakers who were forensic psychologists and members of the FBI. So I'm very interested in going to college to study psychology, to understand why people commit crimes, and hopefully I will prevent crimes and help convicted felons discuss their problems and get the help and rehabilitation they need. I also have an interest in helping children and teens who might be struggling with mental illness or other issues. And I couldn't have come to this conclusion with, without Ms. Wargaki. And I have been accepted into the Honors Society of BG SU to study psychology.
And to close this, I just want to say thank you to Oakwood, specifically the Professional Development Committee. They have paid for me to attend, I believe it was three times. There's a conference called Crime Con that occurs every year. And I've been able to attend and meet some of the leading detectives, the leading journalists. I mean, there's Erin Moriarty, Josh Mankiewicz, Nancy Grace. And I go into their sessions for three days and I like take note after notes after notes. And I come back and I bring everything that I learned to the students. So I appreciate Oakwood taking the funds and actually supporting me in this class that I'm so passionate about. So thank you.
Thank you so much. What an excellent presentation. That was really great. Oh, you want to say?
I'm grabbing my stuff. Grabbing my stuff. I'm here since seven o'clock.
Just to let you know, yeah. So good time to go out to graders. Is that what we're saying?
Graders.
Dr. Gupta, yeah. Thank you so much. That was really spectacular. Well done. It was great to get your student perspective. All right. Next up is, let us see our superintendent report.
Yes, just to go over a number of items. First of all, just Veterans Day, I'd like to begin by thanking our staff for their hard work and recognizing our veterans earlier this week. It's essential to reflect on the significance of this occasion and express our deepest gratitude to the brave men and women who selflessly served our nation. Veterans Day, as you know, is of profound importance to honor and remember those who've sacrificed to protect our freedom. So here at Oakwood Schools, we understand the importance of instilling those values of gratitude and respect in our students. It's great to see the students and our families come together at our elementary schools. And then I noticed programming happened at the junior high and high school with our students, just to really showcase, you know, we talk about the idea about being a Purple Star District. And, you know, we shared that banner with you, that recognition of all of our schools. That's not just an event that just happens one time a year or just because we wrote an application. It's things that we do on a regular basis, not just holidays, but definitely at Veterans Day, we were able to do that for our veterans. I thought it was really special. For, I'd also like to, in keeping with the thanks to Dr. Lang and then actually, you know, selecting a great person to kind of come and share, share with us. That was an excellent presentation. In addition to many things that she does, we just had our November PD and Service Day. So while our students were home on that Monday, was it Monday or Tuesday? Tuesday. On that Tuesday, our staff was in our school buildings and they were doing professional development. There were at least forty-nine sessions that were being done in different formats, most of it done by our own staff members. So staff members training and teaching other staff members in addition to outside experts helping us out. I'd like to thank Dr. Lang and the PDC Committee, our staff and our partners who presented. I'm going to give you a little sampling of some of the sessions that were done. On the academic front, it was our new wisdom resource. I wrote a blog about that a while back, but we continue just to love it. It's very complex. It's a lot of hard work for our elementary staff that are implementing it. And so there was a large amount of time that was devoted for that, but it's just tremendous. There were some STEM sessions that were done, some specific content support that was done, data analysis for learning on our social emotional well-being. It was the Anxious Generation book. So that was great that as we're studying kind of that in cooperation with the Wright Library. Actually, we have book read, Community Night, number three tomorrow night. But it was neat also that one of our staff members who read the book did a session back in September and then did another one, sorry, in October and then did another one in November. So that was neat. High attendance for that one. We have something called our Positive Behavior Intervention Supports. And there's a lot of work being done at our junior high with our PBIS. And then the three Rs, we continue to have the respect, responsibility, and relationships. We kind of work through that. When supporting learning, supporting our learners, there was some, there's a session on trauma and gifted learners. There was a session for autism awareness advocacy and accountability, one on student health, and then work with our EDI. And they're working more in building groups now, so giving them time and space to work at the building level. From a safety standpoint, we had a lieutenant, Billage, from Oakwood Safety that came in and talked with our administrative assistants in addition to Assistant Superintendent Couch and also Mrs. Brown working with them to do some work. And then some other sessions on professional conduct and communication. I just want to share some policy updates with you. One of them, and you're going to see this later in the form of first read, is that entrance or kindergarten age start date. So just to give you some background, and I shared this in an email, that since two thousand seventeen, the administrative team had been monitoring the eligibility date for kindergarten entrance. So based on benchmarking with surrounding school districts across Montgomery County, the advancements and expectations with the elementary curriculum, I'll be recommending a change in the entrance eligibility for kindergarten students from September thirtieth to August first. So districts in the state of Ohio have only two options for that entrance eligibility. It's September thirtieth or August first. They don't get to pick any, a date in between. It's either or. So all the districts in Montgomery County have changed to that new August first date except for us. We've kept monitoring it and kind of taking a look at it. Currently, our board policy, five-one-one-two reads that a child is eligible for entrance into kindergarten. If he or she attains the age of five, honor before September thirtieth of the year in which he or she applies for entrance. A child under the age of six who's in Morgan kindergarten will be considered of compulsory school age. So we'll need to update that policy to reflect the change tonight and then a formal approval next month on that. So it's just essentially a first read. We've already created a plan to send out some communication to families and then share it out in various formats. Preschool, the preschools in the area, Oakwood Register, we'll make sure it's on our website to make sure we do the best we can to communicate that change upon successful approval of it. I know it's a change for some of our families, but we have been judicious in weighing those options. And now I believe it is something important to bring forward. The next one is cell phones. So at the state of the school, or state of the state address, back in April, Governor Dewine called on school leaders to limit cell phone during the school days that students could focus on their learning. So research does support that student use of cell phones in schools does have negative effects on student performance and mental health. And cell phones distract from students from classroom instruction, resulting in smaller learning gains and lower test scores. Ohio law, signed over the summer, now requires that we adopt a policy governing the use of cell phones and actually limiting it for students during school hours. And we need to have that by July first, two thousand twenty-five, so next, next summer. The Department of Education workforce under Governor and the Lieutenant Governor encourages all of us to adopt a policy to limit it as much as possible. Ohio law requires that students look at policies that talk about emphasizing cell phone use to be limited as much during the school hours, reducing cell phones related distractions in classroom settings. But they do allow us to permit certain devices based on health concerns. So if it's tied to some kind of medical device and a student needs to be able to use it to monitor, there are waivers and things that students and families can have around that. We do currently have a policy in place and so I first want to make sure we do that. It's not a cell phone policy. It's a personal communication devices policy that we have in place. We've been waiting as a district on our policy partner, board policy partner, Neola, to provide us a boilerplate. We want to make sure that we're also in line with kind of, you know, law, but also kind of best practice that's there. So they've recommended that clients wait until the updated draft policy aligns with law. Well, we just received it two weeks ago. So just based on availability of the gentleman that works with us, we do now have a meeting set up for early December. So I couldn't bring it to you for this one, but we'll go ahead and have our subcommittee take a look at it. And then, and then the thought is possibly being able to bring it to you as a first read in December. So while we haven't adopted, I got to make sure you understand that, while we haven't adopted this new policy yet, actually, over the summer, our principals, you know, at the elementary level got together and then I'd say the secondary got together to talk about. to talk about what are some things they could put in place right now. So although policy hasn't been changed, um, at the, at the district level, they made some school-wide policy, uh, practice changes, I'll say that. And, you know, I'm gonna tell you that I'm pleased with how our students responded. At the elementary level, it's been significantly reduced and, and, um, there, there hasn't been uh, as, um, that we see any ill effects by that. At the secondary level, uh, they came out of the ring, uh, we have a new principal at the high school, working with Mr. Baden-Hob, Mr. Salyer has, and they, they kind of have, have put some things together. I feel like actually our elementary schools, with what the, the new, at least the state law is asking for, we're already in line with it based on our practice. Um, at our junior high and high school, they've made significant changes to it, and so we continue to kinda think about that. Um, my hope is that our new policy will actually just match what our current practice is of this year. You know, uh, some, a lot of things have been put in place. As we gather, um, our, our principals have been gathering feedback from our students and families. Um, here's what I anticipate, is that we'll continue to limit cellphone use during instructional time. That's exactly what is, has been written in there. Um, and then we'll provide information to our families, um, who may need to have, um, some kind of device for medical exemptions. We'll make sure that that's written in there. Um, the state does allow for flexibility in where devices are stored during instructional time. I've been in conversations with our principals about what makes sense, um, and as we can kinda consider what is specific here to Oakwood, our students and, and, uh, what seems to make sense. I'll be honest with, with you, the policy I'm a little disappointed in, be, uh, that, or at least the law, I'll say, has been put in place. Because really, the governor just talks about limiting cell phones as a way to, um, get away from the distraction and the mental health and the anxieties that the phones provide. There was nothing really that was written in there about actually teaching students how to use phones properly, or what that's supposed to look like. Now, I think that there's some, some maturity that goes along with that conversation, and there's some ways that, that that has to happen. So I appreciate our principals kinda a little bit talked about that as far as, you know, can't, can't and shouldn't we be thinking about that? So although that's not written in there, we're starting to have some early conversations. We've been doing that in the past, our counselors and our classroom teachers have always been doing some of those things, but we'll continue to think about how that might look. Um, I'm gonna say this, I understand that we have some families that may want fewer restrictions, and that we're gonna have one, some families that want more restrictions. Um, in a school district with over one thousand nine hundred students, it's hard to create a plan that's gonna help balance the tensions of, of safety. Student safety has some come up amongst our families as, uh, as, uh, you know, how are we gonna navigate, uh, limiting cell, cell phones or, or phones and still keeping things safe. Um, focus, but also making sure that we have student-focused anxiety and support. So for us to be truly successful in whatever plan we adopt, we're gonna have to address the mental health aspects, and we need our, our families to help partner with us on this. So regarding the next steps, our policy committee will meet early December, and I plan on bringing, um, the policies to you for a first read on, at our December meeting. You'll not be voting at that December meeting, um, but after December ninth, uh, we'll have our pr- principals begin to share information. If that's kind of the direction we see things going, so that we could probably actually go away for winter break, come back from winter break and actually then begin kind of the implementation of what that new plan might be, um, a- as we kind of, you know, go to the, that second read or, or a- approval, um, in January. For our communications update, uh, we talked about this in the board work session. I, I wanna publicly thank our community relations director coordinator, Amanda Brown, for her hard work over the past few months in updating our website. Uh, I kept telling everybody that we're gonna update, update the website at, at the end of November. Um, and so, you know, she actually put a date out there, uh, a specific date. I'm not gonna say the date. I'm gonna just say that you're gonna have to be surprised, and one day you're gonna wake up and it's gonna just be refreshed. Um, it's been a huge work and just appreciate her leadership around that. Um, in addition to all those things, um, I, I do wanna kinda note, our board, uh, members did get advanced copy of this. This is a mailer that's gonna be hitting mailboxes the next couple of weeks, and, um, it puts some great information out there for our families, and, um, we'll, we'll put it, continue to put a, a stride in of, of putting that information out there. This, I would say, is a direct reflection of that community survey that we, we, you know, held back in the spring with Fallon that talked about how and where they get their information from. And, you know, that, um, we've gotta make sure that they're not all gonna see emails that come in, they're not all gonna see, um, things that are on our website. So just another avenue for them to get information from our district.
Now, if I ca- if I may, um, going back to the cellphone policy, so, um, as a teacher, I, we just implemented at my school, uh, an absolute no-phone policy. So when the students, it's really, school's now like a Dave Chappelle show. So, cause when you come in, uh, before you get to school, your phone is in a bag, locked up. You don't have access to it, and so the bell rings, uh, at the end of school. Um, I was not a big fan of this policy, cause I use the phones a lot in my classroom, and I, I'm happy to police that, that, that's my role. Uh, and I have to say, it is a significant change in the students, like having just no access to the phones. It's, it's really been, it's a significant improvement in their conversations with, um, each other, with their attentiveness in class, with two or three or four students every period, not trying to sneak a phone under a desk and thinking about how they're gonna try to, you know, uh, get on some social media or something like that. Um, uh, I, I was probably most against it at my school, and I'm now a, a big advocate for it. It really is a significant change. So wha- whatever direction we choose to go to here, um, uh, it's been, it's, I've been pleasantly surprised.
All right, next up, oh, are there any comments? Uh, next up, the republic comments, but since there are none.
Actually, I've got, I'm, I'm still on for, uh, letter D, Master Facility Plan. I'm actually gonna head up, up to the podium to, to deliver that.
Okay, so just in, in keeping with that, I wanna, uh, share kinda the update. We did, uh, talk at the board work session about the master facility plan, and by the timelines that we've been sharing at the past, uh, few meetings. So some of the priorities that, that I wanna share kind of that helped in, in the framework of, um, you know, kinda what are our next steps are gonna be. First of all is that this is Master Facility Plan two point O. So a- as we shared before, there was a comprehensive master plan that was put in place back in two thousand eighteen that said that, that we would have a three-phased plan, uh, that would happen. So in two thousand nineteen, phase one focused on the junior high and high school with focused attention, with some targeted work happening at our elementary buildings. And so two point O, uh, talks about the idea of some focused work at Smith and Harmon, and with some targeted work at our junior high and high school. So, you know, really the, the idea of, um, a priority being that we're addressing that comprehensive master facility plan, it was a community-driven, uh, project that was, uh, put forth. Uh, all the information has been shared on our website, and I know that it was closely looked at and monitored, you know, by lots of hands as that took place. And so really, um, back in the, in the summer, as we took a look at it with our administrative team, began working with you and the board as I think as early as June to say, we gotta pick this up and kinda make sure we're staying on track and task with it. While that was happening, we were also having a lot of conversations about targeting our safety enhancements across all of our school facilities. So safety is something that, that, um, get, I guess we'll never be able to say that we'll have one hundred percent safe anything. Uh, but what we do is we, we talk about layers, layers of protection that's gonna happen. And so as we continue thinking about that into the future, we fold in those conversations that that has to become a priority. And, and when you take a look at the second part to that, that piece, it talks about school facilities not just being our school buildings, but what does that look like also in our athletic spaces also? Uh, the third piece was that supported target, supporting that targeted work at our high school and junior high in those academic spaces. We know that we've got vibrant learning that's happening. You heard about that in that curriculum showcase with the forensics class. We've got other places that we can use to also enhance the learning that takes place. And then the last one is this idea about anticipating uncertainty. Our, our, uh, community made a strong statement, uh, that they wanna keep their iconic facilities and, and buildings. At the same time, that means that there are sometimes things that, that may unfortunately break, just in sometimes in our, in our homes, uh, here in Oakwood. And, uh, we're not always able to anticipate some of those things. And so as we take a look out into the next five to seven years, we have to start looking at sometimes, uh, things that we know that might need in, in a condition of being replaced, and make sure that we're being cognizant of that as we put together and, and plan for that. So these four priorities right here help become the framework, I would say, of kind of how we put together that facility plan of what I'm gonna be bringing forward, uh, to you tonight. So what that recommendation components look like, uh, at each of our spaces, you'll see at Smith and Harmon, we're gonna do focused attention. And what does that look like? Uh, we use sometimes that acronym MEP, which stands for mechanical, electrical, and plumbing. So essentially, I know it's, it's sometimes things behind the walls, they'll say, to make sure that we've got the electric upgrades, mechanical upgrades, um, especially with our HVAC systems, the plumbing that may look like in our, in our pipes in our restrooms. And then you'll see targeted ADA enhancements that are gonna happen there. There is, again, we wanna make sure that we are being, um, uh, cognizant of all of our students and, and our community members and citizens that come in, wanna make sure that they're able to access properly, uh, the, the parts of the building. At the junior high and high school level, we use that, that phrase targeted attention. So the HVAC system, we still have one section of the building that we need to bring up to, uh, to like the rest of the building to it, uh, with the HVAC systems, ceiling lights, the roof, uh, we, we've got, uh, pieces of the roof that, that need to be, uh, maintained. Our family consi- consumer science room, uh, needs, uh, um, some updates, and, and then also our cafeteria in the res- perspective, just something we continue to hear about as far as helping, you know, the, the flow so that our students can get in and out, uh, a lot faster and it be, be a little bit easier for them. At the Lang School, targeted attention, uh, looks like HVAC systems, uh, that, that will be improved. And then from a safety enhancement, we look at the idea about, um, our school building at Smith, Smith Elementary to have some safety enhancements. And then we talk about, um, some of the, our, our, um, uh, athletic facilities. Matt Cummin being the home stand, specifically the home stands being, uh, something with, with safety. Lane Stadium Track and Turf, uh, the resurfacing of the track and then the replacement of the turf. Softball and baseball fields, uh, would have some targeted attention to it, and then our weight room. And we do see a number of our students, uh, from all different sports and, uh, PE and, and, um, just other areas using that weight room. And then finally, the junior high and high school, the exterior doors, making sure that they're, that they close properly, making sure that we're able to have those, uh, for the, for a longer span of life. And then finally, at Lang School, uh, the HVAC, actually that's a repeat right there. So if you look at this, uh, the, the final recommendation, the financial recommendation that, that I'm bringing forward, we're not voting on this tonight, but as, as we worked with our, uh, administrators, our facilities, we, our, our core committee helped give us some early feedback on this. Um, and then, uh, talked about this at the board work session tonight, is that a total project cost, uh, recommendation is a forty million dollar project to be able to do those things. Um, the term would be a thirty-three-year bond that we'd be looking at at a four point seven-five mils. I know that sometimes it's, it's difficult to understand of what does that translate into. So for a hundred thousand dollar home, it would equate to approximately a hundred sixty-six dollars and twenty-five cents. And, and that's financial scenarios as of November seventh. So obviously, um, we, we have been talking about the possibility, uh, the board, you would have a conversation, uh, for a recommendation for a possible May two thousand twenty-five, um, placing it on, on for a bond. So those, those, uh, prices may, may adjust, uh, but that just gives you maybe a, a rough idea of what that looks like. As far as next steps go, I'm gonna talk about the ones in yellow first. So in January sixth, there is a deadline to file, uh, with the state, the state consents of the special needs resolution. We need to, that, that's a deadline that's set by the state. So we've got a December ninth board meeting that, um, there's a possibility, a board action, uh, that, that, uh, you'd be able to provide that gets us a state consent and a special needs resolution and the resolution of necessity for bonds that would, um, if approved, would make sure that we meet that January sixth deadline. And then for January twenty-eighth, there's a deadline of filing for an election, uh, for a May sixth ballot. Uh, that would mean that on January thirteenth, we would have to have a board action. And if we do, we'd stay in line with being able to have a May, uh, by placing a bond on, on the May sixth ballot. So no decisions you have to make tonight. This is just, uh, information for you to have. Um, and then obviously you're able to share any questions with us leading up to that December ninth, and, uh, we'd be able to answer those and bring those to, uh, either the work session or the next board meeting. Any questions for us?
I don't think, does the board have any questions? Not at this time. I, you know, one of the things that, um, I'd like to be pointing out is that board member, I think that was around in twenty eighteen, um, when we, when, when we talked about it in the most overly simplified terms back in twenty eighteen and considering twenty eighteen dollars, we kind of came up with three options. It was a thirty million dollar option, a sixty million dollar option, and a ninety million dollar option, ninety million dollars being, um, uh, the community was very clear that was not one that they were interested in. But looking at this, uh, this option right here, this really keeps us in track. Uh, thirty million dollars was like, let's just, let's replace the knob and tube wiring, replace the, um, cast iron, um, and galvanized piping, and just the most basic of kinds of, uh, things. And as a district, we decided that wasn't a direction we were willing to go. There's much more that needed to be done, um, and to enhance the facilities and not just the basic structure. Um, and so this, within the sixty million dollars again in twenty eighteen, this really keeps us on track and in that window of where we want to be, uh, going back all the way. Twenty eighteen was just when we, when we decided that, and I think the committee had been started up even, uh, and well before that. So thank you very much for coming in and just as a newer superintendent, you've been down a while, around a while. But, uh, with really honoring and carrying on the torch of our master's facilities plan, uh, which has been really thought out, uh, over the years. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and with that said, there are no public comments, so that's gonna take us on to, uh, item three, board reports. Any board reports this, this, um, okay, excellent. Takes us to number four, budget and finance.
Good evening. Uh, item four A this evening is your normal, uh, October monthly financial report. That's informational, uh, for you that you see in your packet every month. Um, item B is approval of the five-year forecast and assumptions for fiscal years twenty twenty-five, the current school year that we're in, through fiscal year twenty twenty-nine. Um, so just as a reminder, uh, school districts have to, um, submit to the board for approval and then submit to the state a five-year forecast in November, and then a revision in May. And so this is that required filing. We went over the finances back in September at length, um, at our work session, and so we took those numbers and we transferred those over into the state's template that they require for us to submit to the five-year forecast. So no changes. Um, at this point, we're, our, our financial plan actually is running, um, I, what I would call very tight. We're very close on our revenue and very close on our expenses, so we're doing really well, um, at this point in time through the year. So there, because of that, there was really no changes that we wanted to make to the numbers. So, um, for your consideration is the five-year forecast and the assumptions in item four B.
Can I get a motion for item four B, please? Ms. Sauber?
Ms. DiLorenzo? Mr. Ryder Garcia? Ms. Kawhi? Dr. Middleton? Mr. Wilson?
Aye. Item five, any unfinished business before the board? Item six, any new business before the board? Takes us to item seven, administrative reports and superintendent recommendations.
Yes, let, number seven, letter A, is just a, um, presentation for, for your review. It's the new course proposal for Lifetime Sports and Athletic Leadership. Uh, there's no action at this one, uh, but you're, you're able to look at, at the attached file, um, and, and be able to look at it. But our teacher worked on that course proposal along with Dr. Lang. It's just a first read, and then you'll approve it at the next month, uh, meeting. If, if you have any questions, obviously let us know. Letter B is the, um, that, that policy, uh, with the entrance requirements, that the date, uh, for kindergarten. Again, it's just informational for this first meeting.
Uh, next up is item eight, personnel items, resignations on rules.
Yes, so just, uh, for your, uh, approval, the recommendation of a supplemental resignation, uh, for the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five, and that's for the junior, the junior high academic team.
Can you get a motion for item eight A, please? Ms. Sauber?
Ms. Kawhi? Dr. Middleton? Ms. DiLorenzo? Mr. Ryder Garcia? Mr. Wilson?
Aye. Next up is number nine, personnel items and recommendations.
Yes, I'll go ahead and take, uh, number nine, letters A through E under one motion. I'll go ahead and read each of the items. Uh, letter A is employing Nicholas, uh, Nick Schaller, uh, as a custodian, uh, at the high school. Letter B is tuition reimbursement for a teacher. Letter C is supplemental contracts for, and volunteers for the two thousand, two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Letter D is amending a supplemental contract, uh, for a junior high football coach. Letter E is, uh, the recommendation for, uh, the approval of substitute teacher, or, or, sorry. Yeah, substitute teacher, and then, uh, that's it. So letters A through E.
Can I get a rec, uh, excuse me, can I get a motion for items nine A through nine E, please? Ms. Sauber?
Dr. Middleton? Mr. Ryder Garcia? Ms. DiLorenzo? Ms. Kawhi? Mr. Wilson?
Aye. Next up is item ten, executive session. Recommendation is made to enter into executive session for the specific purposes of considering the compensation of public employees or officials, and to prepare for the negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation and other terms or other terms and conditions of their employment. Can I get a motion for item ten A, please? Ms. Sauber?
Ms. DiLorenzo? Dr. Middleton? Ms. Kawhi? Mr. Ryder Garcia? Mr. Wilson?
Aye. Thank you all for attending. The board anticipates no action being taken after executive session. That's all.